For our main event. Item number 15, funding for AECom to evaluate the engineering and costs of a Business 51 design incorporating a four-lane section from North Point Drive to Fourth Avenue, a signalized intersection at Fourth Avenue and Division Street, a three-lane twiddle cross-section from approximately Fourth Avenue to Patch Street, and the DOT minimum standard four-lane cross-section from approximately Patch to South within the city limit. I put this on there as an attempt to give us a starting point, to talk about other options that we might have that we had not yet fully explored. If you don't like 434, change it. If you don't like the dimensions or the boundaries, change it. If you don't like the, I don't know, whatever it is, change it. But let's start somewhere to get back to the table. We have a bunch of people willing to, ready to speak, so we're going to go there first. And Vinnie, I'll call you back up. Where do you go? Oh, there you are. Yep, I got you at 13 and 15.
I'm just going through the list again.
If you want to back clean up, I can certainly move you.
Thank you. This is a tough, tough subject for us as a community, and I feel like we've done a lot of work preparing for maybe a not-so-popular plan. However, we've been given ample amount of time, four to five years in the planning process, spent millions of dollars, and I would just hope that the council is willing to give consideration to the plan as presented with some modifications as needed. I'm not necessarily in favor entirely of what Mayor Wiesa is proposing, but I don't think it's without merit that we generate some consensus-forming discussion about this topic. I think the key thing in this will be just turning down the level of condescension in the room when we're talking about it. Please, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate that, and I think everybody else would and your council would appreciate that as well. However, we did spend a lot of time, energy, and money trying to plan this project. Pre-pandemic, I was at all of those meetings, and we had every opportunity to find it, you know, on the website, through public notice and whatnot. So I think we need to really consider the plan as presented with some tweaks. However, I don't know how that process works and who has the ability or how council can deliberate on that to make those tweaks. I don't know if that's a unilateral decision. It kind of seems that way right now, but I'm not sure that council agrees with your plan, Mayor Mike. So I hope that we can all kind of try to figure that out. I'm sorry that wasn't definitive and, you know, I didn't take-
Kind of wishy-washy.
It was a little bit wishy-washy. But no, I do want you to take into consideration the plan as presented. I think that's, that's the most important thing. And as Mr. Bezek had discussed, making sure we get all those details and facts out there, you know, even post-mortem, what this referendum means, right?
I like the phrase.
How it's going to affect us as a community, because I'm pretty sure that half the people in this room don't understand the fact that we are going to be waiting for road projects to get done now. So if we can at least do the post-mortem on that and actually get those numbers out there, show us what this plan is, the actual proposed plan as, as we have it positioned right now is going to cost, that'd be great. Show us the plan that you're presenting and then everything in between, so we have like a plug-and-play type of thing, so we can just shift things around and get some real numbers going on, and real data, not the, not the data, not Facebook data. None of you want that crap anymore. Come on, we want real data, we don't want sparring sides. We want the city to actually show us the position that is best for our community, not what's happening here now. So, thank you.
Thank you. I feel the need to clarify this again. This is a proposal only because it's a starting point. It's not asking us to scrap anything that we've done already. It's asking us to further consider potential options that, again, may not have been fully explored. This is a starting point. If you don't like 434, change it to something else. But come back to the table. That was, that was the whole point of me putting this on here. Mr. Tesh, I have you on 15. Thought it was 16, but now it's 15.
Quick, Tesh, again, 1100 Frontenac, haven't moved. But I do have a property at 3133 Church Street. And, you know, in looking at, looking over number nine, I went back to the video and was watching the August of 2021 Board of Public Works meeting. And I didn't get an answer for that, but what I did notice is that the lady from AECom did an extensive presentation on this project. What surprised me is there was only two people sitting back here in the audience, two people. And that tells me, as important as it is, that tells me that somehow the word didn't get out to these folks. I want to thank, I don't know where the camera is, but I want to thank everybody that voted yes for this, only because we can get back here. This is a chance to start all over again with all these folks here. You and all these folks here have a chance to start again, to meet, you know, set up all these meetings and hash through everything, and as this gentleman here said, and I agree, put the cost on there, put everything on there, but by the same token, consider the 434, because it's very obvious that I think it's going to be hurting those people in business that are above, you know, that you're going to put three lane in. I think, but I think, you know, if you, if you would, just would have talked to the folks in the beginning, I think it wouldn't have got to this. But now we have a chance to start again, I'm hoping that I'll see some of that.
Thank you.
And especially, oh, yes, and I want to say this, is, you know, what's happening is by the time it gets here to the council, you know, you're voting on the finale, but these folks should have gotten a chance to go to the, been informed to go to that Board of Public Works meeting and ask the questions there before we even got to this point. That's about it.
I agree. You know, I just brought up another idea. Maybe we don't do a plan, maybe we just have AECom come in and do a presentation on what options there might be out there. That could save us some work, too. Andy, you're up.
My name's Andy Sahusky, 2900 Frontenac Avenue, Stevens Point. I was going to read this, but I'm not going to do that. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you're bringing this hopefully back to the table, so we can kind of discuss this and go through some other options. I know everyone's saying that, you know, it's been out there for a while, this has all been discussed, but just seeing what it can do to these businesses on both the north end and the south end, going to a road diet could just be detrimental. And as someone that lives on the south side, just thinking of the added traffic that could happen on the residential roads, which could happen, because as humans, you know, we're going to take the path of least resistance from getting point A to point B. And I've seen it when there was one lane each way during the construction just recently, you know, just more traffic on Michigan Avenue, more traffic on Minnesota Avenue, and those are residential areas. So just the fact that we can bring this back to the table, hopefully find more options, not saying there's a right one, but if we can just talk and work through it, you know, I'd be happy with that. So I hope that you all do this and we can get back to the table and discuss some options. So, thank you.
Thank you. We still have quite a few people wishing to speak. It's been great so far. I hope everyone's cognizant of allowing time for everyone else. Trevor, do you want to get on?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thanks. Mayor, so Trevor Rourke, 601 Washington Avenue. Yeah, I guess I don't understand the statements that have been made online on the city website as well as the proposal by you, Mr. Mayor. Are you asking as well for funding for AECom to tell us what it would cost to revamp the current design work for north and south segments as well as Fourth Avenue intersection? And then shouldn't this also be in the proposal? So in other words, how much money would be wasted by not using the current designs? And then how much by redoing them? So it's kind of compounded if that were to happen, right?
Yeah.
Further, the south segment with the current 4-3 conversion design already won a $3.5 million grant with the state, which you mentioned on the city website, too. And super excited about that. Thanks to city staff for making that happen and saving us those tax dollars. But the referendum response statement you made, Mr. Mayor, mentioned possibly giving this money back if required to the state with a different design if that were to happen. But I would say this is, this was irresponsible for a few reasons. One is returning that money, that means we have to pick up that tab as taxpayers. Second reason would be returning that grant money means that the city is less likely to win a grant from the state in the future for something like this or even a future other road project. And then the third reason, for the same reason as number two, we're less likely to get a grant from the feds, which folks have been paying attention for the last, oh, boy, four or five months. The bipartisan infrastructure law has been throwing money at states like crazy, and basically the language from the Federal Highway Administration is saying, you need to prioritize pedestrians, you need to prioritize bicyclists, public transit, safety is key. So to reconsider just seems really irresponsible. I think this proposal is the wrong direction to turn, and I hope city council either votes it down or decides to postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Keith Kudrowski, 1536 Water Street. Thank you. I think Jeremy brought this up a long time ago, and I don't see what the problem is. All the surveys I've seen, the people wanted four lanes. We agree that the middle doesn't work for three lanes. There's room on the south end and the north, and the north end is actually built four lanes with a big median strip. I don't see why that's getting destroyed and, and made into a three-lane road when it's already set up for four. It's got turn lanes, it's got it all, and we're going to change that. You're going to, why are we doing that on that end? That sounds like a gross waste of money, moving all this dirt to build a beautiful median strip which does nothing for the road. So in the south end, I don't know, I know a lot of these people, they're begging, that's, this is their livelihood. They do rely on drive-by traffic. I'm not going to Hardee's if I'm not on that road. I'm not going to Arby's. I'm not going to a ton of these places unless I'm on the road. They need traffic. The middle, you can do what you need, I guess. I don't know, actually a friend sent me some pictures from Wausau. They have, they have a four-lane road from Schofield to downtown, and I was shocked. It's all on the road. They got the little bike painted on there, and you gotta, I take that route seldom. How did they manage to get that in? They have a sidewalk, no boulevard, four lanes. I don't know. I think you gotta look at other options. I think this was pushed by some people to AECom, which I still don't get how they were just given the award. How was that not bid it out in itself? How did you just pick one person? Who were they in the ear of that they got chosen? There are other, there are other designers out there. It's not a one. So just a couple things, I think you need to reconsider it. Beevold, yes?
Say you.
Mary McComb.
Mary McComb, 2100 Elk Street in Stevens Point. I'm really appreciating the checks and balances built into our democracy now, especially because common council needs to check this proposal that the mayor has presented tonight. First, what was it about the referendum that spurred the mayor to his 3:00 AM proposal that's on tonight's agenda? The referendum didn't concern Business 51, or did it? Literally, it didn't. But its backers confused the hell out of people with their claims that it did, even though it didn't. It was a mess, and it still is a mess. And the mess probably accounted for the very small 31, 30 vote, how many, margin of victory for the people who voted yes. But the mayor decided early in the morning that this tiny victory was about Business 51, and thus we have this proposal today as a starting point, and I appreciate that. But we, we have a starting point already. I've got a couple comments about the mayor's proposal. First is, why would we want to keep the north section four lanes? It is probably our most energetic, vibrant, developing, high-density residential neighborhood, and it's truly mixed use. We even have a pedestrian pass-through that the city designed. And now, now we're going to make all those pedestrians still cross four traffic lanes even after the redevelopment, and we're going to lose the roundabout that would make things safer and more convenient, both for drivers and for pedestrians. And to save property acquisition expenditures, the mayor proposes we should narrow the lanes from the DOT recommendations to the DOT's minimum width. This clearly is not as safe compared to the current design. I'm, I'm wondering, why would the mayor propose spending more money to ask AECom to develop more plans, to develop a less safe, less friendly, outdated corridor that people are going to have to deal with for decades, long after I'm gone? Why is the mayor holding the city hostage to a small group of property owners who have presented only a fear-based rationale for their arguments?
Please.
Surely-
Let her speak.
Surely, the mayor, with his years of experience in government, knows how to recognize and respect expertise and professionalism.
Thank you, Mary.
Or maybe not. I've got one more sentence.
All right.
Maybe fear is behind his decision to favor the people who want four lanes. I encourage the council to reject this proposal. Stevens Pointers deserve the best for Business 51, and we already have a proposal. Let's work from there.
Thank you, Mary. Neil Wasinski.
So Neil Wasinski, 396 Old Wausau Road, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Now, I just want to be honest here. I don't think anybody wanted this to go to a referendum, to divide the community up really bad. The only reason that this even went to a referendum is because the people were hearing, like their voices were not being heard. And even after that, I'm not trying to be offensive here when I say this, I think people are still feeling that way, because we have four lanes on part of it, four lanes on the bottom, and we're still talking about three lanes in the middle. So I guess what I'm proposing is in Grand Avenue in Wausau, if you look at it, they have a four-lane road, right? And then they have these advisory, bike, bike lane things here, and you yield to the bikers. So we have to be, reach a general consensus that that works for everybody. This plan would only, I don't know, let's be honest, maybe a foot and a half on each side. Why don't we build this like Grand Avenue in Wausau, expand it out a little bit, keep it four lanes? And that way, everybody's being heard. We have a four lane in the middle, we have four lane on the bottom, we have four lane on the top, and there still is some pedestrian improvement. And I guess I'm going to give these pictures to you guys, just the business of Grand Avenue.
Do you need those back?
No, you can keep those, those are yours to keep.
Give those to the clerk after everybody's-
Just, I don't know, just consider it, that's all I'm asking, and, yeah, just consider everybody's voices and opinions on this one, because we can't keep, you know, being divisive here with this stuff, because it's not helpful to anybody. So that's it. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Keith, you're up again.
Keith Bezek, 301 Fourth Avenue. I would also encourage the council to reject this, this agenda item here and work with the current road proposal that's been designed already. As a, I'm speaking a little bit more on behalf of, as a small business owner. My business and my wife's business, Caravan Wine Shop, is in downtown on the square, and yet I fear that doing the 434 would prohibit people from being able to access downtown. And I want to explain that just a little bit. I think Mary already mentioned the, the divide that is division is, you know, it's, I used to live on McCulloch, it's treacherous to cross. We all have heard about this already. But if we were to make, you know, this a more friendly street to cross, people would, of all kinds, in cars, in bikes, on foot, they would be more inclined to explore different parts of our community. We wouldn't be hanging out on one side and not crossing because we don't have a car or because it's just dangerous. Building a vibrant business district where there's also residents, there's plenty of walkers around here that walk everywhere, making that an attractive place to people only brings in dollars into the community. If this is all about people's money in their pocket, then, yeah, it's about, you know, making the city attractive and having a sense of vision for the city, not just protecting what people know. If people are afraid of a roundabout, I mean, you're going to be stuck in the past, you're going to be stuck and, you know, dry up. I mean, circles are nature's, nature's way of saying hello. Right? I mean, so it, it, there's a friendliness to making the street more accessible. People will continue to drive through. We're not just a city for people to pass through and get to the other side. We're, we're a city for people to drive through, take the time to see what's around them, pull over, turn off, park their bike at a really cool bike rack, and frequent the businesses, shop, spend their money, stay at a hotel, go downtown. So as a downtown business owner, I would encourage you to work with the current plan that you have available, reject this 434 thing, and make the city friendlier to all types of people who live in Stevens Point and who live out of Stevens Point. It makes Stevens Point an attractive place to the greater world. And on that note, there are way bigger cities than us that have much smaller roads, more dense traffic, that have become more accessible to bikes and pedestrians. And I tell you, man, their businesses are thriving.
Thank you, Keith. And you have the ultimate, right? You have the ultimate road diet, you're on a one-lane road, and on sort of a roundabout the businesses.
And a roundabout.
A one-lane roundabout, one way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Jane Wasinski.
My question was answered.
Okay, we'll move along. Bob Larson.
Bob Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue, Stevens Point. You mentioned starting point. Business 51 doesn't just impact Stevens Point residents, it impacts all the people living in Portage County, Plover, Town Hall, Whiting. I would ask the mayor and the city council to be proactive, get together with John Pavelski, county board supervisors, and discuss Business 51. And by that, I mean, see if they want to kick in some money, because they are not real happy with this program either. And if you could sit down and maybe share the costs on this, and then take a binding referendum, not an advisory, a binding referendum to the people of Portage County. Do you want four lanes or two? And that's all you have to do. But you need cooperation from Portage County, but from talking to people, they're not exactly excited about this current proposal, this diet road. So I would say to the city council, get the mayor authorization, to get together with Pavelski and the county board supervisors, and talk about this thing, because this thing impacts everyone in Portage County, not just the Stevens Point residents.
Thank you. Thank you. And Bob, it's a great idea, getting together with the county. If we can get some wheel tax to help pay, that'd be awesome. But I got to tell you, I don't think it's legally possible to have a county referendum for a city project. I don't think that's possible at all, but I'll check. Fran, you're up.
I'll pass. I think it's been pretty well-covered. Thank you. Oh, Fred, I-
Oh, yeah, Fred, I don't have you on here. I got Fran. Fran.
Fran. Hi. Fran Makarov at 2949 Lindbergh. And I have wanted to point out first is that it would be so nice if, while you are coming from Plover over that bridge there, to be able to drive into Stevens Point and have it looking nice. Because when you are traveling down Church Street, it's horrible. There's all kinds of bumpy roads, and the roads go like this. So, you know, and I have started having some problems with my car, and I have only moved up here since last November with the tires, you know? And my car was just fine down, down, down in the panhandle. So anyway, but, yeah, I mean, and the thing that, from the, from the three-lane to the four-lane is something that I just do not agree with, because the, the three, the three lane, you are still going to have traffic on both sides, but you are actually going to have that turning lane, because there are a lot of people that'll just jet right, you know, just right in the midst of all these cars, excuse me. And so, and I had voted no, just so you all know. Anyway, so, you know, I just wanted, wanted to point that out. And, you know, the thing that I do not get is that you have all these people that live beyond Church Street, you know, you, you have residential homes, you know? And people have to be able to walk, like going from one side to the other side and so on. But you have so many problems there. And I think having that bike lane on both sides for people to actually ride their bikes, which would be great, and also to be able to just have easy access for, for the average person who has to walk and who doesn't have a car, you know? So I just wanted to put that out there. And the other, the other thing is that, you know, when I had first saw the referendum, I was confused as heck. I asked so many questions, and I did so much research. I was still totally mystified. And then I had started listening to the pros and the cons. And the thing that I have always gone back to is that, you know, from Tampa, I mean, we had a board- we had a board that truly listened to everybody, all the time. I mean, and the, and the minds were open to progress, and progress is what Stevens Point is lacking, you know? We have to build for the future of all these kids and the college grads and, you know, so on.
Thank you, Fran.
But, okay, thank you.
Wisconsin winters will do that to roads, it's terrible. Um, Kevin Fladoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just doesn't make sense, just doesn't make sense, just doesn't make sense, it just doesn't make sense, it just doesn't make sense, it just doesn't make sense. Eleven times, twelve with the mayor, I've heard it thousands of times, in this community, it doesn't make sense. To go from four lanes down to two lanes, doesn't make sense. I can repeat it to you people over and over and over again, but it doesn't make sense. The same thing when I came in here in December and said irreversible, do you remember that? When this is laid in concrete, it's irreversible, we're stuck with it for over fifty years. As president and chief financial officer of a corporation that has two businesses that have survived for over twenty years, I think I know a little something about fiscal responsibility. To not look at this road in a four-lane manner and continue down the path and throw money at AECom to design a two-lane road that a large portion of Portage County does not want, that's fiscal irresponsibility. I wanna thank the mayor for bringing this forward and for everybody to look at and consider, because a two-lane road is fiscally irresponsible for Portage County, the city of Stevens Point, and anybody that travels this corridor. If we're gonna spend over fifty million dollars, or close to, on a road project, let's do it right. Let's spend some money, let's expand the research, let's make it work for everybody. We've tried to work with the city, we've tried to work with the city council, the Southside Business Association, all the people that have stepped up here. We've been cordial, we've been polite, we have been professional, that's what the Southside Business Association is all about. We wanna work with you. I've offered four different options to Scott Padun. Granted, I'm no engineer, but I have some good options and some good ideas, and I got the same answer every time, it's gotta be a two-lane road diet. That's not gonna work, people. Let's pass this, let's give AECom some more money, and let's try and work together. Wouldn't that be nice if this could work for everybody, not just one side or the other? Mary McComb, I wanna thank you for your comments. There is a reason we did a referendum, and it's because of your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, our speaker list is exhausted, I think we all know how this is going to go.
Excuse me, I was signed up to speak on this.
Um, I gotta, I'm sorry, I do have a fifteen, maybe. Carrie, by all means. Name an address again for the record, please.
Yep.
Thank you. They do. I guess we'll share.
I thought all of the documents were supposed to go to the city clerk.
That is not a policy. It should be, but it's not, we have, we frequently have people that wanna hand things out like the pictures that were here earlier. I, I think it's appropriate as long as we stay on topic.
Alright, thanks.
I'm not sure why we should accommodate people.
Name an address again.
Carrie Ryan, one, ten-hundred block of Fifth Ave.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why we should accommodate people who chose not to participate. This has been going on since 2012, even longer since, you know, the jurisdiction. I've been here my whole life, I know that this has been widely publicized, it's been on the city page, it's been in all kinds of papers, it's been noticed, you got postcards, you got door hangers, and if you say you don't, you're not being accurate, alright? I, I don't see why we should accommodate people who choose not to participate in public life when everybody else knows what's going on. Nobody elected the Southside Business Association to office, they do not have administrative powers in the city. They succeeded in bringing a legislative effort that requires transportation projects to go to a referendum, likely twice. It isn't a compromise to blur that distinction between the referendum and Business 51. There's a reason the direct legislation statute is written the way it is, treating it as a proxy for specific administrative decisions, namely the redesign of Business 51, is a mistake. I know it was marketed as a proxy, and that likely most of the votes in favor of the referendum intended it to be as such, so I'm sympathetic to your desire to react to it, and I am also sympathetic to the scale of the issue and the Southside Business Association's interest in it. However, I don't believe they approached the issue in good faith. The fact that they misused a legislative tool to try to address an administrative grievance is prima facie evidence in that regard. I'm aware that they don't believe city government approached the issue in good faith, but even if I set aside the evidence that they did, the bottom line is that city council are the people elected to make these decisions. I have not liked your efforts to play both sides, and I call on you to have courage to stand up for the elected government and not cave to bully tactics, not even so much for the specifics as the long-reaching consequences that rewarding these types of tactics inevitably brings forth. The council, whether you agree with them or not, whether you like them or not, is fulfilling its role as an elected governing body for our city. I would argue that the process they engaged in, if you look at it objectively, was very responsible in regard to the Business 51 redesign. Either way, there is a group of people that strongly disagree with the outcome of the process, and again, I'm sympathetic to your disappointment, but I am not sympathetic to how you've channeled it. It feels like every opportunity they've had to engage in good faith going back over a decade before Shore or Johnson or any of the boogeymen in the current narrative has been squandered. At some point, you can't ignore that the common denominator is the intransigence of a small, unelected special interest group. Bottom line, who do I trust more? A group of our elected representatives charged with the interests of the entire city, or unelected businessmen with their own perceived interests in mind? And even in the aspects of this issue that are sometimes difficult, how seriously should I take the interests of a special interest group after they have demonstrated their bad faith as plainly as they have with this referendum?
Thank you. We have, uh, the, the handout, um, for those of you who didn't get it, talks about some information, it's copied and pasted from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, uh, there's quite a few links to what appear to be accidents of young children struck by cars and crosswalks. A copy of this will be available at the clerk's office beginning tomorrow morning, if you need that.
Will it also be on the website?
Uh, no, we generally don't put those things on the website, but it will be available through open records at the clerk's office, beginning, again, tomorrow. Brock, our speaker list is exhausted, is exhausted. Did you, did you need something to say?
Yeah.
Did you speak already on this one? Alright, then, I will allow it, um, even though we needed you to sign up earlier.
Yeah, sorry, appreciate it.
Brock Maddox, 54, 21 Plover, Monroe Avenue, Plover, Wisconsin. You know, I've, uh, been coming to these meetings with these people, and, uh, from the first meeting, there's been a lot of people. Okay, I wasn't in, involved in this project back, uh, as far as this individual was talking about, but obviously, some, there was a miscommunication here, a miscommunication, obviously. I believe we have a real opportunity here, um, and I, I, we can't let it slip past, because this, this road project is going to last for a long time. Do we want to have this division for that amount of time? I mean, we have a, we have a opportunity here to fix it and move on from it, and do the right thing, and it's about doing the right thing. This is a real opportunity to come together, end a division, ease some tensions, maybe. So, I just, uh, encourage everybody to use some discretion, some tolerance.
Thank you, Brock, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Alright, Alder Fischler, your hand shot up twice, so, I thank you for waiting and being patient while everybody had a chance to speak, the floor is yours.
I would like to make a motion to postpone any decision to be made tonight, um, and move this to, this discussion to Public Works Committee for review to include AECom and the DOT, if possible.
Okay, uh, you wanna have, I just wanna understand what you're saying, we're gonna send this back, go to Public Works, and at some point in the near future, I don't know if we'll have the ability to do it next month yet, but in the near future, have AECom and a representative from the DOT present for a question and answer session?
Um, well, there's obviously still a lot of questions from all of these people here, and I think it needs to be addressed as to, you know, what can be done and what can't be, and what's within the realm of, you know, the federal standards, and I think that's really important.
Okay, and we'll, uh, I expect it'll be a pretty big turnout, so we'll see if we can't get a little bigger venue to get everybody here, but if that's, if that's the wishes, then let's do that, that sounds like a great start. Is there a second to that? Seconded by President Johnson. Okay, discussion on that motion. All tomorrow.
I think this is a mistake, um, elections have, I mean, we just had an election on this, you may not like how the outcome was, just like in any election, you may not want, you may not like who, who, uh, won, you may not like the outcome, but it was a fair and free, it was fair and a free election. It doesn't matter if someone won by thirty-seven votes or one vote, I mean, the referendum did, uh, a, actually pass. I mean, this is a once-in-a, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing for us to do, I think we should end up having it done right, I think the mayor's, and think what the mayor's trying to do is the right, uh, is, is actually the right, is actually the right, uh, thing. You know, Brock talked about elections, we just had one. Um, and you, and there was a lot of debate on what people did and did not know about it, uh, there was confusion about this and that, but that happens in every election. I mean, the people have, I mean, the, the referendum won, I mean, you may not like it, I mean, I voted against it, but the, but, but it won, just like being on the city council. I mean, I don't win every vote, but that's part of the, I mean, that's what, that's what democracy looks like, you're not going to win every vote, but then you move on, and you try, and you try again, and that's just part of what the legislative process is. Um, I think this is a, this is a mistake for us, uh, we're not moving forward, we're just gonna be doing what the county does, push things off, kick the can down the road more and more and more. Um, as, um, Holman said, they have a trophy case of studies, and this is where we're going to be headed towards, and not actually getting anything done. Does anyone remember the courthouse? So, um, I think this is, I think this is a big mistake for us, um, I think we have a way that we can move forward with this, look at other options, um, as opposed to throwing it back to whatever, to have it thrown back to the Public Works Committee and so on. Um, I think this is a, I think this is a mistake, we had the election, I wasn't for it, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Alder, personally, I just need to be clear too, because it sounds like there might still be some confusion, this has nothing to do with the referendum, the referendum passed, it was certified, we are bound and obligated to follow that, uh, until such time as another referendum turns it over, within, uh, two years, I think the timeline is. So, it's not about the referendum, this is just about coming back and trying to find a better product. Okay, Alder Schorr?
Thanks, and, um, I was gonna say something about that, I mean, if, if I'd say anything about this council, um, I don't think we're gonna punt. The courthouse is, is, uh, one of the most difficult, and maybe too difficult for us to, um, resolve, but, um, this is a council with a proud record of stepping up and, and dealing with difficult issues. You know, on Church Street, for me, one of two things would be really helpful, either, you know, there's some portion of Church Street, uh, maybe where the added cost, um, would be minimized, um, versus the, the entire stretch, or knowing that the, the public is up for paying the, the additional cost. Yeah, advisory, uh, referendum versus direct legislation, and, um, so, interesting scenario raised about, uh, if the community had voted eighty percent, um, for, for lanes on Church Street, um, that would've helped me, because my main concern is the additional cost, um, and I, I probably would've gone, uh, along with it. Instead, we, um, we do have this broad-gauge referendum, um, and, you know, we're looking at, at some unintended consequences. Many of these points I, I have made before, but, um, the, the most important thing for me in relation to this proposal is actually to differentiate between Church Street and North Division. Um, I, I've said many times, um, bike and pedestrian friendliness on Church Street is a lower priority for me, similar to Highway Ten. The strip mall, um, development pattern is established, I mean, there might be ways to get away from it, uh, over time, and, and we have President Johnson's interesting idea of a targeted area master plan, but meanwhile, um, you know, it, it is what it is. And the other reason it's not a top concern for me is that, that we got, um, buffered bike lanes on Water Street, they're there, one block to the west, same commuting route, I'm good. So, North Division, really coming to what I wanna talk about, um, for me, is much more different from Church Street than it is like Church Street. We're seeing exciting mixed-use development, we're succeeding, we have a targeted area master plan that says we want more mixed use. We've got more residences being built, the Reserve on the motel site, the Convent. Um, the, the purchase of the laundromat, Matt was mentioning, and I think it's very much on point, and I'm just gonna make a couple final points here, um, about the pedestrian walkway and then about the, the roundabout. So, the purchase of the laundromat and the preparation of the pedestrian walkway is something that I pushed for, it's, it's something I'm quite passionate about. Alder Niebohn often says that urban planning is sexy, well, I happen to think walkability is sexy. And, um, I have, for a long time, felt it's a crime that campus is separated from Division by this long stretch from, uh, Fourth Avenue all the way to Maria Drive. So, I, I think, and I, you know, I think that foot-traffic patronizing local businesses is sexy as hell. And that's what this is about, that's what walkability is about, that's what we're aiming for, and succeeding on North Division. So, no, I don't want to set up a new, uh, walkway, breaking some of the division from campus, um, and bringing some of that foot-traffic out to those businesses, only to have them faced with four lanes of traffic. Just last comment on, on the roundabout. If there's one place in town where pedestrians should sort of, should be the priority, should have, take the precedence, I think it's at Fourth Avenue and, and Division. I mean, we've all driven by the gyms on Fourth Avenue, and seen that, you know, that you have to defer to the pedestrians there, and I realize it's not exactly the same, but it's only a, you know, block and a half or a block down. This is a, the roundabout, just so everyone understands, is not, you know, the big swooping roundabout like up at Sentry, we're talking about something much narrower, where everyone's gonna have to slow down and pay attention, and that's the point, is because that's a place where pedestrians should be the priority. So, I just kind of wanted to highlight those points, um, I think, you know, I, I'm more interested in the discussion of Church Street than I am of, of North Division.
Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, hi. My name is Melissa Johnson, and you've probably heard my name mentioned as the villain who caused all the problem. heard my name mentioned as the villain who caused all the problems. So I'll accept it. I, I entered this role in political life knowing that it'd probably take some hits. I've had a bad, sometimes disturbing past life, and it probably set me up for taking all the hits that are coming my way, and I'm fine with that because I feel strongly that I make good decisions based on sound information. Big shoulders, or as my mom used to say, I had big bones, so I can carry the weight. I'm happy to do that. Grand Avenue, I travel Grand Avenue frequently. I work for Marathon County. I was rear-ended on Grand Avenue two times, making a left-hand turn in, you know, the inner lane, and it was a distracted driver going too fast. So Grand Avenue is probably not a great example. I try now to not take Grand Avenue, and I'll take Thomas Street now that it's nicely redone. I have memories of Church Street, too. My memories of Church Street were when I lived in Whiting on Strange, Strange Street. Is it Strange Street or Strange Avenue? I forget which. Eleven, my parents moved there when we were eleven, when I was 11, the oldest of five, and I remember walking from my house in Strange Street with my four siblings. I was the oldest, so hand in hand, come on, they've got to come with me. And how many of you who live on Church Street remember the A&amp;W on the South Side? It's about where the Walgreens was. And I'd have my siblings in tow, and I was responsible for getting them across the street from the West Side to the East Side, and, and we could do that safely back then. I'd love to see that opportunity in the future. I remember Kellerman's Pharmacy and Richards Drive-In. I have fond memories of a Church Street that is much different than it is today. When I made my decision on, on the recommended alternative, and again, as the mayor said, we were presented with one, I was focused, and I attended one meeting, by the way. I was focused on safety, multimodal transportation opportunities, reducing environmental impacts, reducing private property right, right impact, and also funding. That's what guided me, and it will still guide me in my decision-making. I appreciate the motion by Alder Fischler. My, my grandmother always told me these, these four rules. Always tell your friends you love them, and I do. Never go to bed angry. This one, never leave the house unless you've got clean underwear. And of course, don't make decisions in haste in an emotionally charged setting. Always take the time to think about what decisions you want to make. So I appreciate the, the motion, and I'll support it, and I also hope that in the future, we can do a targeted area master plan to include the new Steel King Tiff along with the Church Street corridor. Let's create a vision for the future, not my vision of my siblings and I going to the A&amp;W, but that future vision of another family enjoying that corridor, walking to Hardee's or Arby's or to Walgreens or whatever is along that corridor. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, President Johnson. Again, the motion before you is to postpone and have a larger public input meeting with the Department of Transportation and AECom. If we could keep our comments relevant to the motion, that would be appreciated. Alder Christensen, then Alder Keemer.
I think it's, it's a good idea. I'm very supportive of, of that motion. I think it'll give us a chance to take a look at things. As I take a look at, at the original proposal, I have a hard time with the, the north segment, and I met with the mayor last Friday, and I explained I have all the way from Raleigh up to, up to Maria, and from Fourth up to Maria, I actually have both sides of Division. My district actually, on the referendum, voted 62% to 38% against the referendum. I'm, the people on, I try to get out there, and I, I've talked to a lot of people. I spend a lot of time trying to get feedback from, from both sides. I'm not hearing the, the support for the, for the four lanes on the north side. It's the most heavy, heavily populated, most densely populated area in this entire city, and it's only getting more densely populated. Only a block away, you have all the dorms. We're adding the banter apartments. We have the Reserve. We have the Grove being developed, and so I think it'd be short-sighted. I do think that this motion is, is well-conceived, and it will give us a chance to take a look at things and not make things, make decisions in haste. And I think the more information we get in the, in a calm fashion, and I do appreciate, you know, I, my first, I got appointed at that September meeting, and so I was there. I got a chance. I took my oath of office at 12:15 in the morning. So I, I've been involved in this from, from the very beginning. I also, even before I was on council, did attend a number of the public meetings and, and the Zoom meetings and all those types of things. So I do think there's some really good information that a lot of people haven't had a chance to, to take in yet, and so I do think having that presentation by, by AECom and, you know, I think I was one of the two people at, at that meeting. So I, yeah, I, my experience, it was valuable, and, and it helped inform my, my viewpoint now, and I, I think it'd be well-served for everyone to have that same opportunity, so.
Thank you, and I agree. I, I think it's a great idea. It's a, it's a step forward. Alder Keemer.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, at that future meeting that we have, what would be really helpful is to just know where we have left off, because when this referendum first became on the ballot, the Board of Public Works was asked to put this Business 51 redesign on hold and wait until the referendum to move forward with design. And so I guess if we're not scrapping the lands, if we're building off of them and improving them and modifying, which sounds wonderful, what is the next step? And I guess based on, I was looking at the financial timeline that Comptroller Lattick had put forward last November, and he, you know, again, that was, at that point of time, the ideas that he was looking at, and it was saying that north, the north segment of Business 51 would come first, then the south, then the center. If that's true, does the design for north need to come first? Is that more time, you know, pressured? So I guess just kind of having more of a timeline in terms of what comes next so that we are really mindful of how we spend those engineering dollars.
Excellent. And as the comptroller said, the north section is going to predominantly be covered by the Tiff.
Yes.
The life of the Tiff is finite, and it's running out. So if we did it today, we'd have more money and more repayment time available. If we do it six years from now...
Yeah, so it seems prudent to move forward on that as quickly as possible. And I will just echo what Alder Christensen said about the north segment. You know, from what I hear from my constituents in that middle residential core, there is a fair amount of consensus on the north and the center, and I think a lot of the contention is on the south, and I think that's where we can focus a lot of time on alternatives and modifications in that area.
Great. I think we're, we're close to consensus here, so are we ready to vote?
I just have one quick comment.
Urban planning.
Urban planning is sexy, we know.
When I first voted to approve the four to three, it was because it was presented as the safest, the most likely to get a federal grant, not that it would guarantee a grant, and it was the least expensive cost to the taxpayers. I just had a conversation with my neighbor who's lived in my neighborhood longer than me about moving because he can almost no longer afford his property taxes, and, and they're, they're a two-income household working, not like my retired two-income household. So anything that's going to significantly raise property taxes or lower the tax base, it could create a real bad unintended consequence. People may move, or people may lose their homes because they can no longer afford their property taxes. I would, when we, I like the idea of postponing. I think it's important to bring more information back. I would like to find out if we went, I don't think we can take the north and the middle section. I don't think we can go four, three, four. You create two choke points that are going to be just a massive traffic headache. I'd like to see four to three at least on the north side in the middle section. We can, if they want to make Church Street a dragway like the one down in Pullover, I just drive through. I don't even know what businesses are down there anymore because I use it just to go from one place to another. I don't stop when the road's that wide, but if that's what those guys want, that, that's okay. But I would like to see the cost involved in that option. How many properties would be lost? How much that takes off our tax base? Because I think that's a double whammy. It's not just what it costs. It's how much are we going to lose as a result of adding eight feet on either side of the roadway to make it safe and meet the requirements of the Transportation Department and the State Transportation Department. So I think postponing's a good idea for a bit, but I'd like to see that information come back as well. So thank you.
Yep, I made all sorts of notes.
Thanks.
Seriously, we made more progress tonight than I've seen in a long time. I do have a question for you since you made the motion. There's going to be a cost to have AECom to another meeting. Are we authorizing that cost as part of your motion? I don't know what it's going to be. Maybe Director Badun can give us a ballpark. Shouldn't be too terribly much, and maybe, out of the goodness of their heart, they'll do it for what we've already paid them. But generally, there's a, an additional cost.
Do I have any other contract left?
I'll have, I'll have Director Badun come in. Sorry, we're done with public comments.
I'm asking if we're going to have the DOT come to and just...
Oh, yeah, no, DOT's free. DOT's going to do it.
They already paid that.
Sorry, sorry. I wasn't clear enough on that. So we'll have Director Badun come in here to see if he can give us a, a guesstimate, but Alder Fischler, you have the floor.
I was also thinking it'd be really beneficial for people to see exactly what the preliminary plans were that we had to choose from on the south side. I think that's extremely important.
Those should still be available on the website.
Because I just want to note that the four-lane option that was proposed originally by AECom had the medians in them, and businesses did not want those, so that's why I had voted for the other option. So I think it's really important just to have a big meeting that's not contentious, to show that, and then also show what was voted on and why by council, and then maybe if there's, you know, discussion to talk about if there is any room for other alterations on the south side specifically.
Great. And seriously, that way better idea than what I came up with. As I said, it was just a starting point. The one we got there. Director, I know you can't speak for AECom. However, in your best professional guesstimate, do you think there'll be an extra charge, and if so, do you have a ballpark number so we can get that authorized as part of the motion? Do you show up at one more meeting planned in a couple of hours?
Show up at one more meeting in a couple hours? Uh...
It's got to be less than, let's say, $15,000, right?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Okay, so if the council is comfortable, and it won't be that much, because we have, we have precedent, because we had, we had a change order, if you recall, to meet with some of the south side businesses. So there, we have a ballpark idea already, but if we could include the cost no greater than $15,000 to attend this meeting as part of the motion.
I won't charge nearly that much.
Five?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we still have money left on that change order, Director? Do you know?
I would have to look into that.
What if we do this? Because we're going to have to have a special meeting on the 29th for the four referendum questions anyway, why don't, why don't you, if this passes, call tomorrow and ask them what they would charge to be on a meeting. We can throw that on with the four referendum questions we'll have on the special meeting on the 29th. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Just so our mother is clear, so it's really just attendance. Do you want anything as far as additional preparation? Are they showing up with anything, presentation of any sort?
So you and I can talk about this tomorrow. Maybe we can even get Alder Fischler or any of the other Alder Presidents involved, but I've got some notes already, just talking about what possibilities there might be, ballpark estimates on what it costs, because we will not have total costs on any property acquisition or changes. We don't get that until the design is almost all done. So all we can do is estimate at this point, but we can get that information. It sounds like we would like to see maybe some physical copies. I know it's still on the website, but maybe some physical copies of the alternatives that they already have designed, stuff we've already paid for, and use, again, use that as a starting point. What if we do this and not this, or whatever, just physical copies?
That gives me an idea.
And then you and I are going to talk about a bigger venue, too, because this room isn't going to cut it.
All right.
All right. So if you are in favor of the motion, and I'm going to restate the motion to my recollection, if I'm wrong, let me know. We are postponing action until such time as we can get a special Board of Public Works meeting, have the Department of Transportation represented, and AECom represented in a public forum to talk specifically about alternatives or possible changes to Business 51's design.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, if you're in favor of that motion, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Moro?
No.
Fischler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Sarah Zua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And by majority consent, that is approved. Thank you all very much. It was productive, more productive than I, I expected. We are adjourned at 9:15. McCormick is, McCormick is still here.